Forty is in progress.
We're ready.
We're ready.
So we're gonna bring the meeting to order at six thirty-three.
Victoria Rocha?
Here.
Vice Chair Brian Samuels?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bisner? Commissioner Kwong? Commissioner Okon? Commissioner Vogel? Commissioner Yi?
Here.
We have a quorum.
The conditions to defy from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chair, stand up for my question. Well, how did the pledge get?
We were told by our city management to add that in.
Add it up.
Got it. Our city clerk's office, not city management.
Any public comments or non-adjunct items?
We do not have any public comments on Zoom or via email.
If you got to approval of minutes of the June, it will also be agreed to during the committee meetings. Can you call them later?
Hey Rocha? All right, thank you. Vice Chair Samuels?
Are you here?
Yes, he was in attendance.
Then I approve, yes.
Commissioner Bisner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Okon and Commissioner Kwong were absent from that meeting, so they will be abstaining. You're welcome. So the minutes are approved by four zero.
Thank you. Again, I just agree with the addition of putting great boulders for French children at the Children's Memorial and Healing Garden. We have Ms. Lucy's question.
Yes, we recently received a request for the South Pasadena Children's Memorial and Healing Garden from James and Dunia Gill to remember Trent Tozer, who passed away in April of this year. He was very well-known in the community. I believe he was in South Pasadena Little League. And he was thirteen years old, so the family has come forward to remember him and have a boulder engraved in his name at the Healing Garden. So the application is in the back of your packet if you'd like to refer to it. It's pretty standard. We bring these types of requests to the commission for your review and for your approval. And the family pays for the engraving, which is about three hundred and fifty dollars.
Any questions?
Um, you know, the young man in our community. They made soccer, that's why they bought guys across that we all have. The green deal.
What's the question, have a motion?
I'd like to motion to approve.
Boulder, Boulder engraving.
Boulder engraved for Trento.
Have a second?
Second.
Chair Rocha?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Samuels?
Yes.
Commissioner Bisner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kwong?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yeah.
Commissioner Yi?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven zero.
Again, item four, approve of Paul, please, they agree to the front, their American.
Yes, I will present the report. There's actually three requests on this, on this memo. The first one is from Holy Family, and they are regular users requesting to use the Orange Grove Field for their black football. And their request is today through November twenty-third, Monday through Thursday, three thirty to five P M. The only items to consider with this, besides field closure, which will not affect them, but their request time is at three thirty, and AYSO start time is at four P M. So we are, we are requesting for AYSO start time to start at five in order to accommodate Holy Family. Any questions on this particular request before I go to the next request?
Is the new expanded time?
Three thirty to five?
I think our, always, if, you know, both of that being shared.
Shared, yeah. And we've always worked.
You have to start at five, you can continue what you guys do, like, you have one part of the field, and then I think you have some of the younger groups that practice there.
So.
And Fridays will not affect AYSO, you can come in.
Our permits won't start at five, start early.
Yeah.
Or as they are.
As they are.
With chair access.
Correct, as long as we're able to partner the two organizations so that we can provide space for them. Any questions or concerns regarding Holy, Holy Family? Okay. The second request is from AYSO Region Two fourteen, and their request is from September first through February twenty-eighth, Monday through Friday, four to ten, Saturdays and Sundays from eight to, eight A M to eight P M. Um, based on just the conversation we had. The field at Orange Grove, just wanna make sure that I let the commission know. We do have an event on October twenty-seventh, so the field at Orange Grove is not available, as well as on October twenty-ninth, there is the Arroyo Fest, which will impact Orange Grove because of street closures. And there is annual maintenance at Orange Grove, November twenty-seventh through thirty-first. During the Arroyo Fest registration, which is on October twenty-eighth, there is availability for AYSO to hold practices or games on that Saturday. Just keeping in mind that parking is going to be limited around the park because of the A Y, because of the Arroyo Fest registration, which is taking place at Orange Grove on the basketball court. But due to the foot traffic of people coming in to register from ten to six, parking may be a little challenging.
What's Arroyo Fest?
It is an event where there will be a bike ride, five K, ten K, and they will be on the One Ten Freeway, closes, and the street closed, will, the streets will be closed on mission through Garfield Park.
Yeah, so it'll be all the way from Garfield Park, the closure, all the way to Arroyo. So the entire mission will be closed. Um, and so that's why we just wanna make sure that, or aware that parking will be very restricted. Yeah, it's a Sunday morning event, it's.
It's, it's available on twenty eighth, just limited.
Yeah, your parking, yeah, people be coming and going.
Because they're doing registration at Orange Grove, so from ten to six. So people will be coming and going. They are encouraging people to ride share or take the metro to alleviate parking around. But you know, there's no, there are no guarantees. But I just wanna make sure that AYSO knows ahead of time so that you can plan accordingly as well.
So just when we do approve, if we do something, we don't make a discussion on them. We just state that if permit server would be approved with the exception of October twenty-seventh, October twenty-ninth, and then November twenty-seventh through January twenty-first.
For the field closure for Orange Grove only. It would not affect Arroyo South or Arroyo North. Correct, those are the, those are just the important items that we need to consider.
Anything in the, regarding, uh, reaching out to Little League or softball, would be shared, shared space for softball?
Well, I was gonna bring it up, uh, right now. I was out of town most of the time, I didn't prepare our, uh, our permit request, which I was gonna bring up now that. I'll prepare a permit request.
Okay.
Yeah, but in the past, there haven't been permits on, so I think the city.
So yeah, that we're gonna do it. So that's why he's gonna be term one, he just has.
So we can bring that to commission at the next meeting.
Prepare it.
Okay. Okay. No, and it's not an agenda item, so we can't really discuss it any further than that.
And we could also, through partial, partial, for like, for like, every, I don't.
Yes. Yeah.
For you city people.
If there aren't any questions on AYSO, the third applicant is International F C. Uh, this is a new group. They have never requested use of any of our fields before. They are requesting to use Arroyo North, Arroyo South, September through November, Tuesdays through Thursdays, seven thirty P M to nine P M.
They would also have to be sharing.
I. This request will interfere with AYSO's request.
Okay, so Holy Family is an ongoing user, and because of the majority of their residents are South Pass or players are South Pass, it's a free re, free reservation, same with AYSO. This came through, we bring it to you to let you know, um, that someone has come forward, because what they'll do is come to us, and if they don't see it on agenda, they would pay, but also this is a men's league, this is not a youth league. Um, yes, it will interfere with AYSO, um, and so it's up to you to say yes or no, to approve or disapprove, but we don't encourage it.
It is not staff recommendation.
Yeah, there you go.
We are bringing it to commission as, or as you're inform, as a F Y I to the group, but we are not recommending it.
That's fine, that's fine, it's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to bring any, anything that does come to us, we have to bring to you. Um, and we will just make a recommendation, and it's up to you to make that decision, but we just, when someone says, oh, did you take? Yes, we did, and it was designed by commission because our youth is first. Yeah, even though we can tell them that, they, they don't wanna hear it just from us, so. It's better from the body of seven.
Definitely.
Right. It's a men's.
It's a men's league.
A men's soccer league, adult men's soccer league.
I mean, even if it was youth league, interrupting.
Right, well, we already have. Right.
Priority is given to South Pass Little League as well as AYSO during their respective seasons. When we do get these applicants to come in, we do bring that information to the commission for their review, but it is not staff recommendation.
And usually what we will do is, when we get contacted by an outside group, even with Holy Family, we, you know, we always say, you remember AYSO is there, you know, whatever. Um, or they call, you know, we have them talk to each other, or I'll email one of them and say, hey, you know, this group is out there, da, 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 and they either know the group because they're South Pass kids on this group, or, you know, we kinda know, like, what would interfere. Um, and something like this would be a, it's, it would be a bigger.
Do you want to take each group individually, or can we do it?
As long as it's specific, it's specified that, yes.
Do I make a motion to approve Holy Family's proposed usage as stated? We, that court, I motion to approve AYSO's permit as stated in the staff report with the exception of Port Grove Field on October twenty-seventh, October twenty-ninth, and November twenty-seventh, twenty-three, July twenty-first, and twenty-four, for field maintenance, and to not approve, uh, the International F C, uh, application. I have a second?
Yes. Chair Rocha?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Samuels?
Yes.
Commissioner Yi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bisner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kwong? Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
And Brian, is it okay if we take an abstention from you since you are AYSO? Thank you.
So we will take that back to a six. We'll take that to a six zero with a one abstention. Oh, I'm sorry, I do apologize. Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Thank you, my apologies.
Okay.
Uh, I was going to abstain, and then I forgot, I brought up. Brains are.
He was like, we don't want those people in our field. Yes, I approve.
Uh, item five, he comes to lead our communications.
It was the, the, the item was brought up on Wednesday last week, was the slow streets. There's something with cities from top of the shot for years, and running studies on them one after another. So the city finally decided, okay, let's try it out, let's have all, buy the program. So they started with Grant, and since that's in my district, I got twenty phone calls or whatever, was about conservative. Uh, against it, it's in right now, right in the street. And subsequently, uh, uh, and once I was sent in and texted, forty at least. They were favorable. So, uh, what it turns out is that it's an experiment that the city, uh, had planned on doing, but finally implemented. But probably, and I'm gonna use the word probably, did not notify, did not notify, uh, people who live on Grant enough. Now, in addition, that was all I was, I heard, that I was Grant, I'm just talking, this all happened within one week. And then I found out it also affected a section of Oak and a section of Fremont, which, in this case, is the, the neighbors don't like it. The bicycle, the bicycles, on the other hand, are favorable, but the main purpose is to try to slow the streets and find out if what they're doing works. So originally, it was gonna be a six-month program, uh, there was so much controversy, I thought it both ways, that now we're gonna try to, uh, assess the program after three months and decide, we wanna continue it? We want to include many, maybe we could, we could keep going, I mean, the streets are affected. Um, or we could stop it right there and pull up the, uh, give it a powerful post that went into the street and, uh, and the striping, and say, well, they really didn't slow the traffic, then someone else likes it, we'll pull it up. But I think the point I wanna get across is that it turned out that it was experimental, and our public works department probably could have notified the neighbors a little bit more, and I say probably because they didn't put flyers up, they dropped them off at the, uh, the front door, and maybe, uh, they won't speculate what they, what other methods they could have used. But it, it did, we got the point across, people now aware of those two, three streets, and there'll still be, there still will be a couple more in the private project. I think that's really all I have to say for, actually, last Wednesday was the earliest council meeting ending, and over the end of about nine thirty. And it's the first one. That's the, that's the earliest we've been out here in three years. And, uh, and, and it's, it's not unusual to be there at one thirty. Okay, thank you, that's all I have to say.
I asked a question for, uh, council, for the council, uh, that, was there a police traffic program happening over and, like, during the lot? Because my bag got pulled over while I was in the car, by a cop that was from, um, Baldwin Park or something, that there was a traffic program.
What, when was that, how long ago?
It must have been, I don't know, it was, it was pretty recent though, it must have been.
Four weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, the cities got together around here, and they decided to do slow streets another way. And I think, God, I forget the exact number, but Al-Anver, South Pass, San Marino, San Gabriel, they wrote a hundred and sixty-two tickets. It all feel like they were low range.
Wow.
But I'll bet you that if they studied the traffic for next week, it would have been slower. So, uh, that's what, you get caught up in that.
My dad got let off.
You gotta think it wasn't to write, I, my tourist, tourist, we had the tickets. The object was to send a message, we gotta slow down on these streets.
I was just laughing the whole time because my dad got my ticket before I did. I was driving, I was, I thought I was gonna lie.
Where did you get your ticket from?
It was on Monterey and Fremont. She was turning right.
The same day, right?
Yeah.
Is that, is that the definition of four three, just, just curving down on?
No, that's not the, the object, this is slow, have people not speeding. Not, yeah, but not to crack down on the ones that, to find out the best way to do it.
So a lot of.
To get in a.
Exactly, yeah, when they make this, you know, a ground is wide, so people will just haul down there. So when you narrow a street, people have to slow down because of the oncoming traffic and things like that.
They put out bike lanes on both sides, both sides of Grant now have a bike lane painted there that wasn't there, ten vehicles.
So you can pull up a park just outside your door of your driver's side, there's gonna be a bike lane. And then at the corners, uh, my councilman were saying, they put these, um, like poles.
Plastic pylons.
Yeah, and so it's kind of like a, yeah, or a ball bout. It kinda makes you go out.
Right, so you're not like.
Yeah, you can't just cut the, you have to go around, yeah. So it helps slow the traffic down, going to single lanes, it's a double lane, things like that. A lot of cities do it. My city, every, there's a center median in every road in, in my city, you can't make a left-hander hardly anywhere.
One, um, I had to say, on the bicycles over the weekends, have a tendency to use brand as a speaker. I go from the high point all the way down to the church, uh, in mass.
Yeah.
So, yes.
They have to go in.
Weekends, and it, uh, though, it was controversial, still is controversial, so that I wanted people to know that it, that's temporary. And, uh.
Pilot puts it.
Yep, all the pilot puts it.
Right, the thing I don't understand, aren't, aren't bicycles supposed to abide by the D N B laws, and are they supposed to stop? One, one, yes, I rarely even do that, I mean, they don't, they don't abide by.
Pretty much don't do it.
Yeah.
At that one stretch.
There are. I will say that we should, in terms of the traffic safety, we have, we have approved public measures, public measures, uh, staff, of the staff. And one of the things the traffic safety, you know, saying, there's, there's an increase on the average speed to be, you know, ten miles per hour more than uh, very political involved, the traffic on the street, with an expectation that was defended, it was just act where it is, and it hasn't, and that's a phenomenon.
Everywhere.
Yeah, so it is those, like, speeding is a real problem, but it's hard to find the right public policy, so. Thank you, public, I don't ever send too much of the vacation.
Well, I'll tell everybody, I don't know if you guys have been hearing, but, um, you know, the Little League Junior Baseball Team had a great, fantastic historical run. They went out and won the state, uh, the district, the section, the state championship in Southern California, and went out to, uh, uh, tried to compete for the Western Regionals in their division, one step before the World Series. And they fell short, they fell, they came and they lost the semifinals, but, um, it was a great, uh, great event. You know, fantastic time, uh, cannot tell you guys how wonderful the city, uh, the community, everybody was. Support of these young men that were out there playing baseball and traveling down the, you know, the West Coast. Uh, it was, uh, you know, it was a, once, well, you know, first time ever for our city. And, uh, it was really fun, families all came out, so the boys, uh, had a great time, uh, they did their best. An historical event, and, and memorable for, for everything. All for the support, and it doesn't start, it's, that was the final product, I think, you know, the city, you know, the organizations, the community, uh, supporting these, you know, boys and girls every, every day, you know, with our field, our communities, our schools, and, uh, it was great. So I just wanna let you guys all know, it was on the paper, you know, for, you know, you had a couple of, a lot of parties at Mama's and things like that, so, uh, well deserved, I guess the, uh, boys got honored at the football game on Friday.
Oh, nice.
And all showed up in uniforms, they got to take photos of the team, and they were announced, uh, they were announced at halftime, so it kept going, and it's a lot of fun. Brian, for our city, you think why is South Pasadena, where's that? And we let everyone.
Not Florida.
So it was a great time.
And I just wanna put out the commission on this, it's really, thanks be done, as always. Um, and it, I feel official, it's kind of prepared to see all, all the work that we do, and, and then everybody, all the officials are gonna be a great representation of the city, for like, this, it's also good people, and I can't intimidate it, but a lot of really, really impressive work from all of the individuals that this year.
I would like to talk about Johnson Park. Uh, I'm over there, um, on Park, and, and admission, and I walked through the park, but every day, watch, I love, uh, of course, I feel, you know, because I'm embarrassed a lot when things have come up, and I'd like to know what my role is as a teacher. Uh, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be the snitch, the local snitch, but maybe, uh, you know, I see things like alcohol, uh, I see bringing in barbecues, uh, I see businesses going on there, uh, you know, what, what, what should I do? Um, other than, you know, the obvious, reporting it, but it's, it's getting more and more, that way, that to say, I mean, it, it, it's all, everybody having a wonderful time, of course, but, uh, you know, I mean, um, there's some people who have said things to me, um, what, what are we doing that? I, I, I just go, you know, you know, I don't know what to say, so.
Right.
Um, I'll do what I can also.
So, um, you know, the alcohol and the barbecues, we can always do extra patrols with our P D to kinda have them walk around the park more, and, um, kinda just to educate them, especially on the barbecues, sometimes I think they just, you know, don't think about that. Um, and the businesses, we are working, um, staff kinda tries to go out different times during the week, you know, and, and, because we'll get calls too. Um, and they'll approach the instructor who might be teaching yoga or whatever they're teaching, and, you know, talk to them. So it's just, it just never ends, there's always a new person helping up, helping up.
And trainers.
Yes, exactly, um, and so, yeah, and so those are the kind of things, and we don't have a uh, ordinance about, about that on city parks, so it's probably one of the things we would need to work on so that P D can enforce.
It's your duty to find, find, um, um, more and more recently, in summertime, um, you're, like, you're late at night, and you feel, wow, wow, we need it. Of course, I'm right there, I'm here, um, and there were two guys out there, month of clock at nine. And there were two guys out there, month of August at nine, really loud music. It's very angry with each other, just yelling at those days. And I don't know how many times you can say the F word, you know.
But they run it. No, yeah, that's why you can. Yeah, you can call the non-emergent line, emergency line at B and just let them know, just like, hey, you know, they're. Yeah, and that's it.
They were right up, they were right up. They were right there.
Good, yeah, no.
Be for people not, would be people not allowed to use parks?
Do you, for, as a business, as a place of business?
More and more.
Cause you can almost go on any of our parks now and you can find somebody that's. Doing a one-on-one fitness or have a five or six, or there's like mommy and me classes, uh, you know, somebody sets them up and then there's a group of moms. They just say it's a mom's club, but then all of a sudden you find it on something that's, oh, it's, you know, sign up for this class at Garfield Park and sign up for this class. And we're just like, wait a minute, it's not our class. No, exactly, there's everywhere.
They're all the time. How about, how about our, our vendor? Their, you know, speaking, do you have any kind of ordinance or do you like them, anything like that?
No. See, those are the hard ones. That we have to, PD can approach, but if they have a business license and they have their health code permit, you know. A, B, or C, then they're allowed to do business, so.
There's no real control of us. What we do wins the.
The ice cream. Like a food truck? Is that a food truck or just like an ice cream truck type of thing?
There, well, now, you know, they're, they're everything, I mean, they'll sell a burger, hot dog, and nachos and some ice cream there. I mean, doesn't help our snack bar, but. We're not gonna sell ice cream, so I, I don't really find, you know, ice cream, you know, comes out on hot days, go ahead, but. I want, just wanted to ask on ordinance, so there are permits.
Well, yeah, if you're doing business in the city, you have to have business licenses.
And every time we have a tournament, have to get, uh.
Yeah.
Wired again. I have something, um, I would like to. See if there's something we can do to reinvigorate the restaurant down at the golf course.
Yeah.
And I know it's been part of like the lease discussion and there's, it's included in a lot of things that are going on, but. It's taking, I mean, I've been on the commission for so long. Nothing has happened, or nothing that I know of has happened. And, um, I'd like to see if we can.
So I'll give you an update of where we are, so September sixth. At six o'clock, we were doing a recreational facility ad hoc meeting, which Victoria and Alberto sit on. Um, and Councilor Don sat up, sat on it for a long time. Um, so we hired a consultant, they will be doing a full present, presentation to council, and then from that point, council has to provide us with direction. So, six o'clock. No, it's, it's council service, a regular council meeting, private council meeting.
Brian, I was gonna say, uh, if our commissioners could show up. Well, please do, I mean, it's tough, you know, it's on September, the, the group is, is great. Is supportive of what's gonna happen. It's a, it's a large project, but I think it's very well. For this community. And it will, uh. From what the presentation, everything should seem, um, it's a big investment, but I think in the long run. It's gonna benefit our city. They're, it's gonna rearrange that golf course. Going from a meeting hall to a nine executive, gonna make it a real popular place. With adding the track tracers to our, uh, to our driving range. We're gonna want them down all the time, checking out their swings, where the ball, how they hit it, their velocity, their distance, there's all the. All the, uh, all the, uh, traction takes the ball. Uh, rearranging our miniature golf place. And then number one, putting in a nice restaurant. To be able to, to, to support, not just the restaurant, but, you know, parties. I mean, you know, weddings, that's just immense.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about the golf and all that, but I know that for our community and the members of our community having. You know, other options to, to gather, whether, you know, it's a, a revitalized. Uh, mini golf place or, you know, we're providing restaurant facilities, meals, people down there. Where it's not just, you know. Twenty-four ounce beers and truly's and stuff, and they give to the, the people playing golf, that the majority of, of which are not South Pasadena residents. You know, we should focus on what our residents want and what our residents need.
Well, we had many, many, many meetings, um, and.
Many.
Meetings, the ad hoc committee, we've had many public meetings, just like this is a public meeting. That it's advertised, everything, and we don't get people, so just as that, we. We got the operator tennis and, you know, we got a few people that came, but residents really didn't come out to the meeting either. Um, and so when a consultant was hired, um, to do the restaurant, do we do? One portion of the build, like take that restaurant and rebuild it. Would not, would be a disservice to the remaining of the facility. So we looking at, but if, if you haven't been in the facility for a while, it is. Well, like in the kitchen. Yeah, if you, you saw that, uh, you, even before that.
Part of these, two, two years ago, two and a half years ago, we started with the ad hoc committee and took the whole golf course. And batting cages, if you wanna play quick, concentrated on the golf course and the restaurant. Let's say, on each of those meetings, in the beginning, the resident was, uh, brought up to discuss how we can fit it in there. Uh, hired consultants, uh, to help, uh, for a master plan. And again, the restaurant was included in it. How they handle that, they're not a ballgame, this is the city that killed that. It's, it's a big, it's a much bigger deal, so now working on going from eight cans to nine holes, other things.
That sounds like a huge deal.
Yes.
So, you know, is there a way to?
So the consultant in the phase approach, which should be first phase on those things that have immediate economic impact that's positive, so they know. The restaurant, the property to pathology, and the mini golf are the first to project, running generally, that would be made one. If then, then we'd be reinvesting in the phase two, knowing that the nine hole is definitely a little bit longer, then also actually it's not as large of a. So that was, it's gonna be proposed on September sixth, with in that two. Really, part of that full space between the, uh, driving race. And the mini golf is. A, a gathering, but it's a whole, whole, own separate entity from the nine hole. So, that, um, is really, would be really great, is having, I know I will be there, some of them will be there. So honestly, we could be there and like say this, I think that's really important because we haven't had. The community willing to show up in the way that we really need to, and I can say pretty reasonably that the ad hoc city. Very excited to finally be able to set up a show off, can't, it's been a while.
We've completed it in Mar- in March and it's been pushed with different council, um, meetings and special meetings and.
And I'm just nervous we're gonna miss. The opportunity to have the surrounding areas all updating themselves, like on camera, the premier podcast. Brookside, and possibly, you know, when Nora already has the honorary park has, you know, uh, talked golf, like. We're, we're missing our mark, everyone's moving around us and soon that window of economic opportunity, the analog. So, I hope helpful. Is ready to talk to us about the case we're seeing.
I'm gonna get the word out that all of. Facility down there for. Years now.
Yeah.
I call it the women's group, when they went to town, other times.
Right, I mean, that's one of the big things, and, yeah.
I understand that there's a lot of, um, cities and planning and all that stuff, but the fact that the restaurants are a mess. The kitchen is a mess and not a stove. You know, what does it hurt to like throw some money?
Okay, do you want your fields or do you want the golf rest? We don't have, I'm saying, do you want golf, you know, I mean, when you look at, when you look at it, it's like. People have to. Have to look at the fact that, once we start doing anything to the bathrooms, it's, it calls for ADA. Okay, so that's gonna be taking a wall down and putting a new wall up because there's not enough space for a circular, so money wise. Where are we getting that from? That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, it's all money, and we wish we had it, but we have, right now, we have what, sixty million water? Fun and water and street projects that we have to do. You know, I mean, people yell more about getting their street done before getting a bad restroom at a golf course. So, yeah, cause I thought maybe a nice bond would go, you know, or a measure, but no one's gonna wanna measure for. Parks and golf courses. You know, they'll do. Yeah, no, exactly, but there are companies, the Nicholas Company, there's a few other companies who've already come and looked at the facility and are. Who would, would be likely to put some money down, but they don't know how much yet, and that's why the study needs to be done, so that we understand the amount of money. Somebody has to put into opening of business. Oh, yeah, no.
Like, oh, they're saying we don't have the money, we're gonna have this, we're gonna have that.
No, I, I totally hear you and I understand.
Or, or ideas into it to.
It's being done, we're working on it, I mean, it's a priority, it's finally come down, so. We have to be supportive out there. Or shouldn't we?
It's actually come a long ways. Notice, Brian, but it's all a package for the Royal, like the batting cages. Okay, now it's finally gonna have batting, I think for last batting cage. And the thicker ball and, and she don't forget the tennis courts were all part of this kitchen, but the restaurant's not neglected, it's like. We'll get to that when we can.
I wouldn't go in that bathroom either.
I think to your point, it's all together, but it's, again, it's all centered, right? Tennis you did, the pitches, and I like the idea that it's been kind of bettered out and, and taken on in peace. And now we have this huge project that is like the next phase, and is it, is. If it sounds like that is even being based, right?
It's, yeah, it's either, I mean, our funding's gonna be a public-private partnership, um, a bond or. Somebody coming in and building it and we just give them the groundlings, so. So that's what I'm saying, it's up to council.
Oh.
And that's a, we have to pay that back though, so the golf course has to make enough money to pay it back, so. That's a scary thing, so, you know, so.
You, you're learning.
So. The Wednesday.
Wait, where's the location?
Chambers, Council Chambers, it's a regular council meeting, it's our thick. It's top golf now.
Which is very much, it looks.
It took that how many years to go?
Ruining the community, then finally I went back to golf there with the ladies and they're like, oh, this is so. People love it, they'll make food, the ball, the course.
Be done, the nine hole is back in the moment.
There's a tenth hole, that's really.
It's changed.
It's changed, yeah.
Yeah, it took eight years to get that agreement done. And the same operator operates our golf course, operated that course prior to.
Lots of controversy.
No, they are, they are, except for they, they'll build and sell, that's what they're selling El Segundo right now, to another private, uh, firm. Yeah.
They're, they're in for making their.
They're called like, what, Top Shot? Uh, the Utah one changed to, they have all these, all the top golf stuff's changed throughout now, they have different names. I passed three or four of them when I traveled to see my family and I'm like, oh, it changed, Top Shot, Top, something. One of the bowling alley was it. It's the same exact product.
The top golf field.
It's a three-story golf range, I know that, and the music and ours, our balls will go over into the Royal, and up on a Royal Drive. Pasadena Avenue and. Yes. Exactly. Down under golf.
Alright, guys, we hope, we hope whoever can make. Make it like, and again. Any other, um, commission requests? We've got the item seven, staff, the long communication, we obviously took the golfers, any questions?
Yes.
Any other?
The other thing, um, we actually did have to come, cancel our concert for this weekend, we're looking to reschedule next Sunday, so we'll put that information. As soon as we, um, have that done, um, and then, um, Festival of Blooms, we haven't, I haven't seen you, but, um. You know. It was a huge event for the city to take on for the first time, I think it was, everybody was all hands on deck. Um, it was expensive, um, but we're hoping next year to. You know, we don't have to purchase as much because the committee was not there, I don't know how they ever did this event, but they didn't have favor staff either, so. Um, one thing we are looking into doing is, um. Looking at the cost of drone fireworks show, or drone shows instead of a fireworks show for. Health reasons and things, so, um, I've been asking, it was seconded by a council member to bring that back, so then we'll be looking into the cost of that.
Who are those two ladies, the same one?
Oh, they're residents here in town, yeah. Festival of Blooms. Many of the city, so it was all volunteer driven. Public works can close the streets down, but everything was done by this committee, now the committees. You know, they're in their seventies and eighties and they're like, we can't stand out there in the sun all day, we're not doing this anymore. So. So we, we've taken it over. Oh, yeah, we've tried and. None of the young, while the younger people are in the parade and with their kids, like, how am I supposed to do this, so. And then this year with not having the field, it didn't make it return, you know, a lot of money. The fireworks show itself was thirty thousand dollars. Um, and so we did not recoup that, because we didn't have the field for seating. Yeah, looking for the drone shows. Uh, the city of Bratwood. The city of Brantwood did theirs, um, and it was just under fifty thousand. Oh yeah, it'll be more expensive than a fireworks show.
They're very cool.
It was just under fifty. Fifty thousand, yeah. And we paid thirty for our fireworks show. Um, and so I'm just trying to, now I'm just talking to different companies, just kind of see what they have. Usually they do, uh. Just like fireworks show costs, you know. Fourteen hundred dollars a minute. So you kind of know how many minutes, how long do you want to show? And so, um. The shows have gone down over the years when they first really started. I mean, one city paid over a hundred thousand dollars, um, in twenty twenty-one to do one. And so now they're really dropping down their price because there's like fifty-five companies that do it now instead of those single unit companies. You enjoy it. Yeah, they did a good job. I know we had a great volunteer that day. He and his brother came to, to volunteer on putting up balloons to park and setting up the park. And Margaret was there, she actually had to walk in the parade and hold it, banner. So, well, thanks. All that public works now and PD, everybody was a huge, all hands on deck event, so.
It's just really, you know, I think it should be a senior staff.
It should be for everybody.
Workshop. But what impressed me the most was the amount of seniors that turned out, like, they filled this room. And there were seniors outside of South Pasadena that heard of this seminar, just have this.
It was for, um, the district. So it wasn't just in South Pasadena, it was for the entire district, so. Yeah, it was very well attended. Thank you. So I'm gonna turn over to. Yes, to Jordan and to Gabriel to give a quick update in their areas.
All right, I have the numbers to present to you all from, and recap from our summer camp. So we had nine weeks of summer camp, uh, that ended in that third week, here's summer camp ed. Uh, as far as summer camp goes, we had six hundred and thirty registration across the nine weeks. Which was a fifty-seven point five percent increase on registrations from last year to this year. Um, we had four hundred last year. Six hundred and thirty this year, exciting. Um, a, a big, big jump. Uh, we had a hundred and sixty-seven different campers. Uh, across those nine weeks, so we had, you have. So we had a hundred and sixty-seven campers and then, uh. Regarding residents or non-residents. So, um, I pulled some of the, pulled the data for that, um, again, made it a hundred and sixty-seven. Campers across those nine weeks, uh, seventy-eight of them were residents and eighty-nine were non-residents. So, um, just a little less than half, um, were residents and most non-residents. So, um, that was pretty, pretty exciting to see. I think that I, I think we're full of years, but it does seem like, uh, that's a higher percentage of residents this year, uh, than we had last year. Uh, and again, that's a seven point five percent increase from twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, uh, for deciding for us. So that was, uh, great to see. Um, and then we have after-school camp ed, uh, which I can pick up, uh, using. Uh, Gabriel and his great team over here, using, uh, our transit, uh, to get our kids from those schools. Uh, the real school back from the park. Uh, we kind of have fifty enrolled, um, in that program across those three schools. A little bit less than, uh, we had last year at this time, but we are supporting lots of careers coming in. Uh, so I click that number to drive, uh, parents either realize they don't like. Their after-school program, realize they need after-school program, or they didn't get into the one they wanted to get into basically, is kind of how it happens. So. Um, technically a lot of you in the weeks, um. Uh, after-school have begun and then, uh, they do have a continued role in it, of course. Um, that's where we are at with the camp. So are there any questions?
I have a question. Thank you for following up. I appreciate that. Um, is there, I know the last meeting or. Me, you know, someone mentioned something about the quality of the facilities there. Um, and I know there's no money Sheila, but is, has there been any? Has there been any talk of providing money or, you know, funding to, to spice it up over there or?
I haven't been involved in, uh, and we do kind of plan and budget for a new year where you kind of. Build into our budget for camp ed, something that we wanna kind of fix that year. So this year we're painting, um, the inside camp. Um, which we'll do again, that it works through some block, kind of through things up. Um, so kind of taking choose every budget year, something that you can have a bigger, take it out of the weekend, if we can work on. Um, as far as, as camp ed goes. The building, um, we kind of try to do what we have, we do, which I would make it kind of fun and exciting, simple place of being what it is. Uh, we recently painted, uh, kind of small bit, but we, we, we painted, uh, uh, hopscotch out on the, on the concrete. Both, um, and, and we painted our basketball lines. Um, we got, just got brand new, making benches for crowds, I'm sure. Sparkly green. Pretty cool. Um, so as far as those discussions that I've been involved in, it's kind of just, it's just, uh, making kind of one thing, take it out of every, every budget. Try to fix, um, to, to try to kind of freshen it.
And what about the bathrooms? Bathroom issue for the children, the safety issue for the children?
Uh, the restaurants are not a safety issue for, for our kids. So our, so our staff, when a kid uses restaurant, they let the staff, uh, the staff that walk to the restaurant. Uh, the staff that themselves walk into the restaurant, their college is in there, no response, walk into the restaurant. Look and see if there's anyone in there, put someone in there, then they come back out, send the kid in. And then they wait outside, uh, while we get to the restaurant. So if anyone from the camp or public were to come in and act. Restaurant, they say, uh, you know what, I have a camper in there right now from our, our seats camp ed program, and just wait till they're out, um, and then, then just go in. Uh, and they sort of get back. So, um, it adds it. Place, um, if you give people coming and going, um, you do, myself, I go and check about the sub testing. Also, they're gonna fix staff, you can't starting, we're going to do past you with the whole area down there. But, uh, always, you'll, you'll find us. Uh, but our staff too, we're gonna kind of check those, those areas, make sure it's ready for, uh, camp, pretty good. And we also talk with our, um. Uh, synths are being daily, daily cleaning, kind of company day, they're gonna be coming in and doing. Semi-regular sanitation, uh, of that bathroom and also public. Public first recently painted.
So moving on to item eight, continue public comments, is that any comment?
We do not have any comments.
We are journeying at seven thirty-three. Uh, next meeting, September eleventh, unless you make it to the study session on September sixth.